Employee or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes. The first speaker is Marcia Young.
I've been a resident for the city of Southfield alone with my parents for close to over forty years. My mother and myself has worked here for over several decades. I'm retired and I love my city. But unfortunately, I live on Capital Drive, which is about maybe ten homes, and the streets are just really messed up. When there wasn't no snow, I was taking my lawn blower to get the crumbs and everything that they're repacking it, and it's just, it's not safe. You go to the mailbox, you can easily slip with all the gravel, you know, under it, and I'm constantly sweeping. The people are coming by packing this stuff in, but it's crumbling due to the weather and the salt. And we're on a main street where the city plows for the school, so the salt is really tearing up our area. My home in that area is over four hundred thousand dollars, and my house is paid for, and I pay my taxes early, and I don't think it's fair that I should have to come out and do this. And they're building a school, or they're getting ready to put condos in Washington Heights where I live, and I don't want any of those trucks coming down our streets if they're going to be doing that. And I don't want the condos to be built for us to start getting new streets to appease the building. They need to address the residents and get ours together before they do that. I really don't have too much to say, except you can come down my street and dodge holes and get the tar off your car, you know? So I don't know who else lives on my street, but I will, you know, get my neighborhoods, which I was going to give them today, but I just got the meeting, and this is my first time ever speaking here, although I've cleaned up all these offices, and I know most of you people up here. And just give me some comfort back to my street. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Sure.
First of all, Washington Heights is on the schedule for this summer for street replacement, repair. I've been on Capital Drive many times.
These came to my door.
Yeah, the cement is in rough shape. And as far as construction traffic, all of it is supposed to exit onto Ten Mile at Continental. It's not supposed to go through the neighborhood. If that is happening, we will address it.
Well, I haven't, yeah.
That's why the gate to the McKinley project is way down. There's nothing on George Washington. It's way down at the end.
May I make one suggestion?
Sure.
The cloth that they have to keep the debris and everything, it's a real silhouette when it comes to that corner, and if you're turning that corner and cars is coming, it's really a potential for a bad accident.
Are you talking about Continental or on George Washington?
On Continental that runs, not where the stop sign is, but when you're coming in off of the entrance to Washington Heights. Around that curve, if you don't have your lights on, you're not going to see through those silhouettes cars coming, and it is a school route.
On Continental?
Mm-hmm, because I've had to slow down myself just to creep out, and if they're coming, there's no yield signs or nothing. It's just, as you may.
All right. We'll look into that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. All right, next we have Deborah.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Donald, and I stay in Lockmore subdivision. And I'm going to quickly read this so I can stay at the three-minute mark. It has come to my attention that the Oakland Church of Christ is extending their parking lot. Surveyors have been in my yard, as well as my neighbor's yard, taking pictures and tagging trees. A few weeks prior, a tree company cleared dead trees and brush from the back of the church. The church has numerous functions, which results in excessive traffic in the parking lot at all times of day and night. There is a lack of privacy because cars are coming in and out of the parking lot, always reflecting their lights on my property during the night, as well as honking their horns during the day. Our subdivision has also been the victim of an increase in car vandalism. My ring camera has caught young men breaking into cars and parking the getaway cars in the back of our sub, and also the Oakland Church parking lot. I've been awakened at three in the morning from the church's snow service company using an industrial snow blower for over an hour to clear the lot. I called the church to inform them of what was taking place, but instead of having a dialogue with me, they hung up the phone and refused to respond. The church was given permission by the city of Southfield not to build the fence. The city of Southfield said that I could apply for a residential fence. I'm unable to provide documentation because of the church, for the church extension. I've contacted the mayor and the planning department, but at the time, there were no permits. I've since learned from Ms. Johnson, one of the neighbors, that permits have been pulled. We're not allowed to have fences for our subdivision. I contacted Sarah Mullally, I believe that's how you pronounce her name, from the city of Southfield back in May of 2022 to inquire about getting a fence. I was informed that the Oakland Church was supposed to have a fence and a wall separating from our subdivision. In this situation, we are aware that the subdivision was in the process of being built, and I just want to know what happened, why the fence or privacy fence was waived, and what we can do to protect us and our privacy, because it really has become a problem. Every night, there is a function at the church. There's just no privacy anymore. So we just don't know why they were given a waiver and what we need to do.
And we have your information that you wrote down. We will send it over to the, between the planning and the building department. Someone will, can reach back out to you.
Okay.
Have you spoken with the police department about some of the break-ins or the cars?
Yeah, the police were there. The police came over to our house the night that we caught the guys on the camera. They were actually in the house, and when they caught one of the guys, the other guys made it back to the church lot, and they took off. So this is not the first time it's happened. We've had several incidents, and you can look it up. And it's just, it's starting to be too much, and if we had have had the fence then, or the wall, there wouldn't be this problem. I mean, we would have some sort of privacy, some sort of protection.
Okay. We'll have someone reach out to you and...
Okay.
...as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Faye Murray? I hope I said that correctly.
Faye, and rather, but it's Maddox.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maddox.
My name is Faye Maddox, and I'm the president of the Board of Directors for the Lockmore Homeowners Association on Pembroke Drive, and you've just heard from another board member, Deborah Donald, regarding our concern regarding the Oakland Church of Christ and the expansion of their parking lot. Deborah talked about privacy. I want to talk about the security, and we touched on that just a little bit. Cameras on that side of where the church's parking lot is have caught cars being parked in that parking lot, so that when would-be robbers come through our subdivision to double-check that cars are unlocked and to break into them, it's an easy out for them. That way, if the Southfield police are in our subdivision, they don't run into them as they enter and as they exit the sub. They can cut between the houses, get in their getaway car, as we've seen them do, and to leave our subdivision. We come as respectfully as we know how. We've got a little bit of a history with the mayor and the city council. We've got an entirely new board, an entirely new administration, and gone, we hope, are the days where the mayor and/or the city of Southfield promises us at a public meeting that something, a particular something, will be done, and it's not done. So what we hope will happen is that you give us some answers as to why it was waived in 2005 that the church never had to build the fence, and what can we do going forward to make them accountable and to make the city accountable for building that fence. We spend our hard-earned money to pay our taxes in the city of Southfield, and we like to see the service in that regard come back to us. So again, very humbly, very respectfully, we come to you saying, please make them accountable for something that should have been done in 2005. We needed to protect our privacy. We needed more than anything to protect our security. It's okay that they can park in our subdivision when they've got overflow, one or two cars, but we can't accommodate forty cars in our subdivision when they've got overflow. And I don't mind having, and we plan to have a dialogue with them as well, but we'd like for someone to reach out to us and include us in that dialogue. My thirty seconds left. Please listen to us and do what you say you're going to do. Hold someone accountable for something that should have happened in 2005, and let's make it happen now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say that I've responded to the neighborhood, including reporting trees that were tagged, as well as contacts with the church. The planning department and I have been in contact, sent them the site plan expansion for the parking lot to one of the representatives of the neighborhood. I cannot speak to the fence, but perhaps Mr. Crowde can. This happened prior to his arrival here, so I'm not sure what records there are, but he could certainly, the planning department probably the appropriate place to respond to this.
Okay. Mr. Crowde, I don't want to put you on the spot. Are you prepared to answer those questions?
All I'll say is that we are aware that the church would like to expand their parking lot, and if they haven't just recently submitted, they are about to. I know that the tree survey was part of their application process, and I've taken notes, and we'll review the previous plans to see this fence issue in 2005, and then we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is Sam Bacall.
My name is Sam Bacall, and I own a business in Southfield for the past twenty-seven years. I have a gas station in Southfield, and I've been before the council before, and I would like to express how important it is to us for this body to consider allowing us to carry liquor, beer, and wine. The state has approved it back in 2006, and many, many cities have opted in. Around us, it has become very important. Customers expect it. When they walk in, they assume that every city has it, because namely, in Oakland County, I believe we are the only city, maybe another city, I think West Boonefield. But my location in particular, there's four cities around me. Every single one of them carries it. So we have faced many, many challenges in the past few years, since COVID until now. Many people in our business, we lost volume because people are staying home, not driving to work, and those challenges are for real. Between paying taxes and paying help and keeping the doors open, it's very challenging. So we need to add more for our convenience for the customers. We're not going to add any burden to the city. We have some numbers from surrounding cities who do carry it. There is no burden on the police department as far as calls, drink and driving, and what have you. We can provide you with those numbers. Many of us have, are willing to reinvest, to upgrade our sites, but at the same time, as a businessperson, we cannot make those commitments if we don't see any more future coming in, and so it is very important. And another challenge is electric vehicles. So between now and then, say, five years, we're going to continue to lose volume. So we are the convenience stores of the future. We have been. We would like to stay in business. We have loans, we have bank commitments, we have commitments to the oil companies that we deal with. So these challenges are for real. We would like this body to consider what the legislature's committee, I believe, made a recommendation, or they will be making a recommendation soon, for this body to consider the study of the issue. So I would like you guys to take a serious look at it. If you guys have any questions, I will be more than happy to sit down with any one of you or all of you privately and public to show you our numbers. I can provide you with numbers with, from our CPA firm, to show you that our numbers have gone down and they're not coming back anytime soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know this is going to be an item that will be discussed later this evening as well. Thank you. Next, we have our presentations. Our first presentation is a tax foreclosure prevention presentation by our city treasurer.
Good evening. I'm Erv Loenberg, city treasurer, and I'm here on behalf of Robert Wittenberg, who's the Oakland County Treasurer. A house is your largest investment for a family, and the goal, we want to see everyone be able to stay in their houses and increase homeownership, but the last thing we want to see is people lose their houses due to tax foreclosure. We're working together with the Oakland County Treasurer's Department, and we, the deadline for people to be able to resolve any delinquent taxes is March 31st for the 2020 year, for the 2020 tax year. If there are any delinquent taxes that haven't been resolved yet and payment arrangements haven't been made with the Oakland County Treasurer's Office, people will be at risk of losing their homes due to foreclosure, and at that point, it's already going to be too late. So there's a strong effort by the Oakland County Treasurer. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here personally tonight. He's trying to make his rounds to all the other communities as well, but asked me to step in on his behalf and let the viewing audience know that there are resources available, and they're trying to make efforts to work with individuals, but the main item is that people have to make the effort to reach out to the resources that are available, such as the Oakland County Treasurer's Office. A couple of the items that are available, there are four main tools that are able to be used for resources to avoid foreclosure. Number one is the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund. It's called MIHAF is the symbol for it, is the acronym for it, but what it is, is it was using funds dedicated for people that were negatively affected by COVID primarily. And if they are a primary homeowner and their income meets the income requirements, and they show that they had COVID hardships, they're able to get grant money, money that doesn't have to even be paid back, but they have to apply for that. And the Oakland County Treasurer's Office will be happy to help with that. They could also go to the website and apply. Once again, www.mihaf.michigan.gov. The other tool is available is a financial empowerment center, and they offer one-on-one financial coaching, and there's a person to contact, Rita, over there. Telephone number is area code 248-807-5287. Once again, 248-807-5287. And the other resource available is the Lake Shore Legal Aid Fund. They offer free legal advice for people lower income and seniors, and their telephone number for new clients is 888-783-8190. Once again, 888-783-8190. And finally, speaking directly to the Oakland County Treasurer's Department, they've got people that can schedule meetings with individuals and review payment plans that are available. Their telephone number is area code 248-858-0611. Once again, 248-858-0611. And I highly recommend people reach out as soon as possible. The deadline is March 31st. Please don't wait for the deadline, because it takes effort to get these tools utilized in advance, and so please, anything that I could do on my behalf, we're happy to try to help at the Southfield Treasurer's Office, but we close our books. We can't accept tax payments after March 1st of every tax year. We turn over any delinquent taxes to the Oakland County Treasurer's Office. Fortunately, over ninety-five percent of the taxpayers in Southfield have paid on time to us, but there's still a small portion that are still out there. So please do everything you can to avoid foreclosure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have the Planning Commission 2022 Annual Report.
This is the twelfth Planning Commission Annual Report that I've presented to council since my tenure began in 2010. This is required as part of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act of 2008, and the Planning Commission shall make an annual written report to the legislative body concerning its operations and status of planning activities, including recommending regarding actions by the legislative body related to planning and development. With me tonight is the chair, Dr. Geraldine Stevens-Gunn of the Planning Commission, and the current list of members that participated in 2022, and as well as our current planning team. We have Ms. Suzanne Hannah, our sustainability planner, also in the audience. Last year, the Planning Commission conducted thirty-five meetings, including fifteen study meetings, fifteen regular meetings, and five long-range meetings. In addition to that, planning department staff supported nine city center advisory board meetings, ten Southfield Public Arts Commission meetings, and nine zoning board of appeal meetings. And there are many crossovers on what we do with each of these boards, and that's part of the reason that we do list those. Some very high-level highlights of items that the Planning Commission reviewed is the expansion of the Northwest Highway Corridor District, the creation of a mixed-use corridor district, or MUCD, to encourage redevelopment on underutilized or vacant properties on our mileroads. We updated the technology corridor overlay development district to allow for vehicle research, testing, repair, and maintenance facilities, which was a direct result in getting Tesla to locate on Telegraph Road. We hired a sustainability planner and Planner One. The city center trail was expanded, and the preparation and adoption of the master plan, as well as other tax amendments, including adult-use marijuana. Initiatives from 2223, and again, I'll just highlight, we're hoping to have a joint Planning Commission and City Council meeting to talk about mutual goals and objectives in the upcoming month. Our capital improvement plan that we prepare on a yearly basis, working with all key departments, city administration, the finance committee, as well as the city council, to give you a six-year forecast of budget as you consider the annual budget. We're currently working on, with the leadership of Suzanne Hannah, our sustainability plan. We have a number of zoning ordinance technical review in alignment with the adopted master plan, which will include such things as looking at accessory drilling units, tiny homes, fence ordinance, and other amendments that are required. This is all under the overreaching goal of the master plan implementation, developing our sustainability plan, and other zoning tax amendments. Planning Commission members do participate in annual training when available through the Michigan Association of Planning. This is a summary of a number of the training courses that planning department and planning commissioners attend. We share best practices throughout the year as we develop our plans. And last year, there were three zoning amendments processed, plus one conditional rezoning, seven special land use cases, twelve site plans, five overlay development district, one residential unit development district, one revitalization plan, which was the John Grace Plan, and four tax amendments. Total development cost based on estimates was over three hundred million dollars in 2022, which is up from 2021, which was COVID year when development was down. And again, I'm just going to highlight some select projects, and many of these you have seen, but we have a new gas station proposed with EV charging stations. As you are aware, earlier in the year, the Southfield Fire Department was before you for a new fire training facility, and I believe we cleaned up some old special land use requirements that hadn't been done originally. The John Grace Revitalization Plan, which is incorporated into our master plan, is helping us attract some potential state funding for senior and low-income housing. And the John Grace Arms Site Plan, which is the future plans of restoring the historic portion of the building and then building a new addition to accommodate senior housing, as well as development of a neighborhood park. We had the former Star Theater, which has been converted into, or will be converted into Triumph Church. The Middle Point Overlay Development District, seen some significant amendments to increase the density on the property located across the street. We had the Friedman Overlay Development District, which took an underperforming office building and created mixed-use development potential. The former Holiday Inn Annex was converted into a senior living facility. Of course, we had continual development at Northland, including the Costco Business Center, as well as the Tesla Maintenance, Research, Testing, and Repair Facility. We had Clean Juice, did a conversion of an existing retail, as well as Savvy Sliders, who took an old Taco Bell that's been vacant for many years and is redeveloping that on Eight Mile adjacent to Sam's Club. Our recommendation to receive and file is under your consent agenda. We also, I know we're working closely with council president and the rest of the council to schedule a joint meeting tentatively for April 17th. I know that's still in the works, but Planning Commission is looking forward to having a separate meeting to talk about mutual goals, and I know that Ms. Shelley Freeman will be coming in the near future to give you an update on economic development initiatives. But with that, Dr. Stevens-Gunn and myself would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilman Fraser?
In your report, there was one notation that Culver's Restaurant was planning to come to Southfield, but it was turned down. I was not aware. Can you tell me what?
Yeah, I believe that was before council in November, and it failed on a three-three vote for lack of support for, on Southfield Road, but I know that they're back... But I know that they're back before the Planning Commission with revised plans and a new ingress egress on Southfield Road. So you will be seeing that at a future meeting.
Same location, but?
Same location, slightly smaller building size, and with an additional ingress egress off of Southfield Roads. So that will be coming back.
Second question is along Telegraph Road north of Eight Mile, where the old trailer park used to be.
Yes.
Is there any plans for that?
Yes, this probably was approved maybe a couple of years ago. But there's a new mixed-use storage facility. If you've driven by there recently, there's steel up about four or five stories. And then in the front, they're going to redo the shopping center for additional mixed use. So I believe on the ground floor, they'll have some retail restaurants and offices. I believe there's a caretaker unit as well. That was previously approved by council. And another one that's off of Telegraph near Gardner, if you've driven by recently, is the Enterprise Headquarters and Leasing Facility. And I often say, we approve these sometimes a couple of years in the past. We see nothing happening, and then one day I drive by and all of a sudden, it's going up. So those both were approved through council probably at least two years ago.
That little shopping center is pretty seedy looking, and it's, you know, the old saying is location, location, location. Seems like nothing ever stays in there very long.
And that's why I think part of Mr. Councilman Fraser, we were excited about the investment to repurpose that entire property. We've had the former Mobile Home Park there, we had concrete crushing, we've had some other illegal dumping activities there. And finally, we're starting to see some reinvestment that I firmly believe if it all gets built out, will change the face of that property and get more towards that Southfield standard that we always talk about.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hoag?
Thank you. I've always had a question about the property, the hotel that's on Northwestern Highway across from the old Hap Building that was in Southfield.
Could you speak up a little bit, please?
I'm sorry, the hotel that's on Northwestern Highway, where the Hap logo used to be on the tower building, Tower fourteen, maybe it used to be called, where the Northland Plaza, the old Plaza Hotel. What are, do we have any plans with that?
Do you want, do you have anything you want to say? Yeah, yeah. There, let me just, I, there, we occasionally get proposals brought forth to us, but I know there's some litigation issues that we're not at liberty to discuss in public.
As a new councilperson.
Yes.
That's why it came up, but I can respect that and wait. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Brightwell?
Chair, every year, I'm impressed with the thoroughness of your report and the volume and the depth of the report. So I just want to go on record this year, thanking you for the depth and the completeness of the reports that you're presenting to us. And I see that you made some changes when we suggested them in the past, so I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. And this is just a high level. You have a copy of the full report in your packet.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, yes.
We appreciate it. You know, you see many of these projects, sometimes not in the same calendar year, sometimes they carry over. Some never make it all the way through the process. But we do, in addition to these projects, we probably do threefold as many administrative reviews in the course of a year.
Thank you. Councilman Banks?
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Two thousand and twenty-two was a busy year.
Yes.
I personally am looking forward to the joint meeting with the council and the Planning Commission. I know a proposed date was recommended and I think a time, but here's my question, is one hour going to be enough? And then through the chair, do we want that scheduled tonight?
So in talking with the Pro Tem and Planning Director, we felt that one hour was enough time. I was waiting to hear back from other council members if that date and time worked. And then I know that the Planning Commission was going to discuss it at their meeting on Wednesday to make sure it worked for them. And then we would go ahead and add it to a future agenda to officially approve and schedule that meeting.
Thank you.
So.
Could, would you?
Dr. Gunn, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Councilwoman Banks, thank you very much for the question. I do believe that one hour would be sufficient in order for us to come have our meeting and make sure we're all aligned on the same page. I do believe an hour will be enough.
Wonderful.
And thank you all very much for considering us. And we're all looking forward to the meeting, and we may even have refreshments.
Wonderful.
I just would like to, I'm in agreeance with the rest of the council. This was a great presentation. I saw the one in detail. It's a lot. Thank you for coming in tonight and introducing yourself to us. We are looking forward to the joint meeting. We've had it in the past. As you all know, I've been on the Planning Commission, and I've shared that meeting with council, and it was very informative and productive. So it's very, very good, and we should go back to doing that at least once a year. So thank you.
And I too would like to thank the planning department and our Planning Commission. I know that, I think that they may have more meetings than we do sometimes. But you know, it does, it takes a lot of commitment, so thank you. We are looking forward to having that joint meeting. Thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate all the efforts of your committee, as well as the entire planning department. I know there's a lot that goes into it. One question I did have, you mentioned you're looking at different ordinances. Do you, does the planning department work in conjunction with the zoning board to see what comes before them that could use some tweaking?
Yes, we do. Ms. Malali represents the planning department at the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we have a meeting scheduled with the new acting building official and his chief inspector on Wednesday to talk about these issues. So we keep in regular contact with the building department. Anytime a zoning board of appeals is hearing repeatedly the same waiver requests, that's time to look at the ordinance to see if there's any opportunity to amend the text. And as I've stated with you previously, as well as the council, the master plan looks at areas that have not been addressed, such as accessory dwelling units, tiny homes, all those types of issues. We try to stay on the forefront of those that make sense for Southfield, and we'll be bringing, I know we're going to be talking about the ice chest, I know we're going to be talking about beer, liquor, and wine sales at the gas station. So we, as you see, we're constantly, several times a year, making zoning ordinance amendments to stay current.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, the approval of the receive and files under your consent.
Councilman Fraser?
Since you brought up the beer, liquor, and wine, and there was a representative from the gas station group here tonight, I would like to see some research done that, because we're moving toward electric cars, which means that less gas and oil will be sold, especially gasoline, at what point does the income for that building change from a gas station, zone for a gas station, to a retail, like a bodega, or, you know?
Yes.
And is it zoned properly if that happens?
We'll take, yeah, we'll take a look at that, and I know that's later on the agenda. We asked a similar question when we had of the oil gas industry, when we were reviewing this gas station. They still are saying that there's at least a thirty-year of diesel gas car inventory, and we're only, we're only, electric vehicles only make up less than one percent. I know that paradigm shift is moving in the next, you know, is moving towards eventually being all E V. But they feel that gas stations will be around at least for thirty years. And within our capacity, we'll try to investigate what those numbers are. But we also will look at the zoning, and typically, the B three that allows gas stations as a special use also allows retail operations, so that should not be an issue moving forward as far as the convenience C store being allowed.
Except it may change the parking requirement.
It could, if they expand. And those are all the, we talked about unintended consequences of a lot of these issues, and we'll be looking at that during our review.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chair, do you mind for reference the E V gas station where that's located, or the E V station with?
That's Frank, Franklin and Northwestern, on the southwest corner.
All right, that's what I thought.
And we also have another gas station that's working its way through the process, and they are seeing the future, and they are putting in the infrastructure to start with at least two E Vs, but be able to expand to multiple E Vs charging stations over time. It's not even something that we have to twist anybody's arm over anymore.
Yeah, go ahead.
And through the chair to Mr. Fraser, I really appreciate those questions. I'm on the legislative team, and some of the things that you're talking about are things that we are working through with this ordinance change. So if you have any more, could you just like call me and we can jot them down? Because I'd like to, you know, get all the answers while we're looking at it, as many as possible. We know it's changing because it's a new way of doing business for a lot of the service stations. I don't even know what to call them anymore, because they're not just gas stations, they're becoming convenience stations. So please, I appreciate the questions.
Okay, I appreciate your comments because almost nobody wants to hear my suggestions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Right, council, any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next we have two sets of minutes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the regular meeting minutes of February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the regular meeting minutes of February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the regular meeting minutes of February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the regular meeting minutes of February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. Are there any items that any council member would like pulled for further discussion? Okay. We have, just briefly, the consent agenda. Item A is in agreement with SMART for a specialized service operating assistance program for October twenty, October two thousand and twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty-three. Item B, a maintenance contract renewal for Motorola radio system. Item C, Roadmaster's Vet Club of Michigan use of our parking lot. Item D, receipt of bids on water and sewer connections for maintenance and services. Item E, the purchase of mowers for the Streets and Highway Division. Item F, the Planning Commission twenty twenty-two annual report, and item G, document scanning services. Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move for the approval of consent agenda items A through G as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve consent agenda items A through G. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our ordinances.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance number one, seven, six, six, for conditional rezoning agreement request of the GO one LLC to conditionally rezone one point five four acres of land from O S Office Service to B three General Business.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to enact ordinance number one, seven, six, six, which is in reference to P C Z R two, two, dash, zero, 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 one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our agenda items for discussion and/or action. And first up is our Police Department for authorization to purchase a Lenko Bearcat G T, G two armored vehicle for the Southfield Police Department SWAT team.
Thank you, members of council, mayor, city administrator, and members of the public. Yes, we are here to seek authorization to purchase a Lenko Bearcat. This is an armored vehicle. I have come prepared to show a PowerPoint demonstration to give you a visual of what this piece of equipment is and what we currently have. With me is Lieutenant Matthew Taylor. As you all know, he manages our SWAT team and also has a PowerPoint presentation originator. So without further ado, let's get to it. So currently, we have what's called a G P V, a general purpose vehicle. As you can see, this vehicle is severely outdated. It actually looks like a military vehicle. And the parts associated with this vehicle obsolete because the company is no longer in use. And so I made the comment about it looking like a military vehicle. One thing we're moving away from in law enforcement is having our equipment resemble military equipment and getting away from the militarization of police departments' look. And with the piece of equipment that we are requesting, that's what we call a law enforcement industry standard armored vehicle. And so it is a multifunctional armored vehicle. We'll be using it for high-risk search warrants, high-risk arrest procedures with dangerous suspects, certainly rescue operations. You say, what does that mean? Anytime a situation may occur, for example, a barricaded armed suspect, officers or civilian personnel may be pinned down because someone has a long gun, we'll use this particular equipment to move in under the cover of the armor and extract officers or civilians. It also helps us defeat what we call a active shooters in our response to schools and places of business or houses of worship. Because as we all see what's going on in this country, unfortunately, with this volume of mass shootings. And this will be the vehicle that will help us resolve those situations. I did have an opportunity to purchase two of these while my time in the city of Detroit. One Bear Cat, and then the other Bear. A Bear is a larger version of this. Before a city our size, there was no need to try to get the Bear, which one costs more money, and two, again, this would meet our needs in Southfield. We will also use this vehicle to assist our surrounding agencies. For example, many of you saw the news reports of Lether Village, who had a situation at one of their businesses where an individual did succumb to a suicide inside of that business. Very thankful this person didn't make a decision to attack the other people in that particular business, whether to take himself out. Well, we did, again, deploy our G P V, but it even took time because the reasons, what I told you, is really not in functioning order. Some of the specs and safety elements of a Bear Cat, certainly you see the video equipment, the camera system, a high-quality video, just like with officers who respond to scenes. We use our body cams, just like our cameras on our police vehicles. It's important that if there's an incident, we have it recorded so we can share with the community exactly what happened using this piece of equipment, just like we would any other incident. Electric power wrench. So a power wrench is used, for example, we have an armed barricaded suspect. We have to remove that door, for example. We can hook it up to the front or the back of this vehicle and rip the door right off to allow us to gain entry in event we need to get in there to rescue hostages or, at the appropriate time, search for a suspect. Thermal imaging, oftentimes, for whatever reason, majority of the time when SWAT teams deploy, we're under the cloak of darkness, because that's how these suspects operate. And so it's important to be able to see our surroundings. So the thermal imaging equipment were very useful in identifying that heat source, whether it's a whether it's a weapon that's hot or a suspect that's hot. This thermal imaging will pick up those individuals through our camera systems. It also has the community engagement component. Again, many times I spent going out in the community with this equipment, draws conversations, help us with the recruiting, retention. When I mentioned retention, one of the first commitments I made to the SWAT team in Southfield, once I saw the GPV is at the appropriate time, I will get them the appropriate vehicle to do their jobs and that time has come. This is part of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three capital improvement project that we outlined some number of years ago upon my arrival. And again, that time has come to move this purchase forward. The total financial impact of a Bearcat is three hundred and twenty-six thousand. Again, as I mentioned before, was a capital improvement project for this fiscal year. We're looking to use the equipment evolving funds to make this purchase. Our financial coordinator, Austin, has already looked at the account, the balances there, plenty of money there in fact to make this purchase. Although a question came up at one of the pre-meetings leading up to this was about why not use the forfeiture funds? So the forfeiture funds could be used, but remember that our capital improvement projects, we got a number of things coming. And this revolving equipment cap will be the best source to to purchase this and then use the other funds for other projects. And we don't want to deplete that as well, the existing forfeiture funds. And at this point, any questions?
Councilman Hoag?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, thank you for the presentation. How many officers do it take to run it and or how many does it hold up to?
So so I'll turn it over to our expert, our SWAT, our SWAT commander.
Yes, ma'am. We always have two people operating the vehicle. We have the driver and somebody that's visibly observing as well. And then that this vehicle can hold up to ten to twelve operators.
Okay, and then when will we receive it?
Once the manufacturer receives a purchase order, it takes approximately twelve months.
Twelve months.
Yes, ma'am.
And just to, just in context, that's a great question that often comes up when it comes to buying this type of equipment. So they don't just have these, you know, sitting around because of the the cost associated with it. So they wait till the the order is placed and then they'll go ahead and build it out. And this company is recognized, is really the only company that law enforcement is using because it's a proven piece of equipment that across the country, everyone's using the Lenko Bearcat or Bear, as I mentioned, the bigger version.
Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, Chief, this this is probably a tough question when it comes up. And this vehicle seem to be multipurpose and it's seem to be able to cover all the potential situations that you may have. But how many times last year did we deploy the SWAT team?
So we deployed, and I'll have them speak more specific. On the top of my head, we had five barricaded gunmen last year and multiple high-risk search warrants. Lieutenant, any perspective you can put on that?
That's approximately the correct number, but also remember that this is used regularly in our trainings as well. So it's not just used just for the actual operations, but we do implement this in our monthly SWAT trainings as well.
Okay.
And we can get those those numbers as it relates to, again, barricaded suspect callouts and high-risk search warrant callouts. We can get those numbers, but we do get them frequently, particularly during the the winter months and during the summer months.
Okay, no, I'm not that I would like to see the vehicle used that much, but you know, it's it's based on environment
Exactly.
and what's happening. So what is the life of this vehicle?
Anywhere from twenty-five, thirty years with the proper maintenance, which we will do the upkeep. But these vehicles are built to last. Again, the problem with the other company, it wasn't recognized, went out of business. But Lenko, again, has been around for a long time. These parts are established and the company will be around for a long time.
Okay, you you generate another question. What is the, who maintained this vehicle? Our motor pool or we have, we had to go to outside?
Yes, sir. So this is actually a Ford F five fifty vehicle. So our DPW can maintain it. However, it can also be serviced at any Ford dealership.
A Ford dealership?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, thanks. Thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Yes, if memory serves me right, the reason that it looks like a military vehicle is when the the military was reducing the amount of surplus equipment they had, they were shipping it off to the cities. And Chief Thomas was the recipient of of this and he demonstrated to us about how it worked and and all. But it was my understanding that it was going to be housed in Southfield, but it was supposed to be used by any community around if they needed it. But it came to us for free. Now, we're paying for this. Do we say to the other communities, we're buying the new one because the other one is antiquated and they can't get parts for it and everything else, so everybody's got to chip in.
Right, so most functioning police departments, they actually have some sort of armored vehicle. The one we're looking at is getting away from the the militarized look. When you look at what's happening across the country and with the ten thirty-three program, that's the program you're speaking of. It's a ten thirty-three program gets surplus military equipment. And so that's, as you know, where that piece of equipment was originated.
Yes.
No longer operational, the other entities or or communities surrounding us, we will be available to assist them. But this vehicle will be housed and operated and controlled by the Southfield Police Department solely.
Okay, the current one that we have, one of the design features was that the clearance, road clearance was high enough that if someone was in the street, you could park the thing over the top of them and keep them from having more of a problem while you're rescuing them. Will this one have the same kind of road clearance where you can protect the the person that may be in the street wounded or something?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that's one of the dynamic features of this, not only extracting from the bottom, but also we can take the top off in the event we have a shooter on the roof and whatnot. So it's multi-dimensional features with this. But yes, extraction is what you're referring to. We have the capability to extract people with this vehicle.
Okay, and the the one you have now also can take doors off and, I mean, Chief Thomas was really proud of all of the features that came along with this.
Right.
Sounds like it's something that's needed because I'm really concerned about our society is starting to go in the wrong direction. And I thank you for being on the job and all your people being on the job to throw yourself in between us and the bad guys. So and we need to do what we can to give you the tools you need to make sure you keep doing what you do the best you know how to do it.
Yes, sir. We appreciate that. Thank you. That's important. Thank you.
Council, Councilman Banks?
Thank you. What are we going to do with the old armed vehicle?
So we'll, at at the point where the new vehicle comes in, our assets in control from the city will look at it. Probably wouldn't get much out of it, probably be more scrapped. Because again, this is severely outdated, but that'll be something that the city will look at and see what they can do with it. City administrator, anything you want to add to that?
We'll work with purchasing to determine how we'll liquidate the asset, get our value.
I'd hate to see it scrapped. Maybe there's like a small community up north or something they would welcome it. I know in the past we've given old fire trucks and I believe there was even a police vehicle to some community way past Mackinac, but.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see. It's just the the parts, it's just no parts for it. You know, when, you know, we kind of, you know, rig it the best we can to keep it going. But that's the issue with it. There's just really no parts available.
Well, maybe they've got mechanics because they're not busy. I don't know.
Exactly.
Oh, thank you. Also, I'm assuming the new proposed Bearcat is all bulletproof?
Oh, absolutely.
The windows also?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then the the price for the Bearcat, is there, is that guaranteed? Or are you going to come back maybe in six or seven months and say, you know, prices have increased, so we need X number of dollars to purchase?
No, ma'am. That is the price that we have. That was a quote we received and it is good all the way through. And it's also being purchased through a through the contract of a government, so it's government pricing for everybody, so that price will not increase at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, I think it would be fun to pick up my kids in the in the old GPV, so.
We can make it happen.
Counsel, any other, any other questions? All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve item A, the authorization of purchase at Lenko Bearcat G two armored vehicle for the Southfield Police Department Special Weapons and Tactics Team.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the authorization to purchase the Lenko Bearcat G two armored vehicle for the Southfield SWAT team. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all. Much appreciated.
Thank you, and hopefully you'll never have to use it.
Absolutely.
All right, next we have the acceptance of Eaton Corp easement agreement for public art.
Good evening again. I have Ms. Suzanne Hannah, our sustainability planner, with me on this next item. As you recall, a few years ago, council accepted an easement to install a half a mile new pathway from Loser southbound, the north, northwestern service drive to Civic Center. That pathway was constructed last year. We are, continue to work in partnership with Eaton Corp now to layer the pathway with benches, trash receptacles, wayfinding signage and a new piece of art, which I'm very excited to introduce to you. The concept of this piece is a bright, bold, colorful art piece that mimics the monarch butterfly that will be across the highway from Red Poll Park. But it's also an opportunity of us to talk about our urban pollinators, to promote sustainability. You may or may not know that the monarch butterfly has declined in population by ninety percent and is currently on the international endangered species list. And the monarch, as well as other, some other pollinators, contribute one-third to all the food that we eat here in the United States. And if we lose the monarch butterfly, as well as other urban pollinators, that they'll have a domino effect on our food delivery system. This is an example of our interpretive panel that will be installed consistent with other interpretive panels along our pathway to talk about the story of the monarch butterfly. This is some of the images of the new sculpture, which will rise thirteen and a half feet above grade and have a ten-foot wide wingspan with brilliant punch of color. Our interpretive panel has been funded by the Southfield Arts Commission, is funding all of the signage. The Southfield City Center is funding the design fabrication and installation of the sculpture itself. So we're here tonight for the council to authorize acceptance of the proposed easement to allow for the construction of the sculpture, signage, as well as butterfly garden. We have proposals with some landscape architects that are going to design a forty by forty-foot native Michigan indigenous plants to encourage butterflies and other pollinators. That is the third piece of this this easement. With that, Ms. Hannah and myself would be happy to answer any questions. This has been reviewed by the city attorney. It has been signed by Eaton Corp. And with your permission and approval of the resolution, you would be authorizing the clerk and the mayor to sign the easement on behalf of the city of Southfield.
Counsel, any questions? Councilman Frazier?
The picture of the butterfly, the butterfly depiction, it's an orange color. It's it's the color of a monarch butterfly.
That's correct.
But it's also, it also seems that sun, sunlight bleaches out the the red colors. Is it going to be painted in a, in a, in a way that it won't be bleached out?
We've worked with the sign manufacturer. They've got structural engineers that are reviewing, it has a ninety mile an hour wind load. And we have brought up that very question. It's EV ultraviolet protected film coating that is applied to aluminum. So it's, it's a, it's a wrap that gets fabricated that has the sun bleaching protection. You know, as as much as that that can do so it stays vibrant. So it's not painted.
Oh, okay. Also, the forty by forty butterfly garden, will there be milkweeds?
Yes.
Planted in there because monarchs need milkweeds in order to.
You're absolutely right, and and part of the the interpretive panel and for them to lay their eggs and for the caterpillar to thrive. One of the things that I learned is that the milkweeds have a toxin in it that the butterflies over time can ingest and they don't die from it, but it's their predators can taste it or be affected by it, so that helps protect them.
Yeah, and.
And and one of the things that I've talked to the mayor about, we're not ready yet, but there is such a thing called the mayor's monarch pledge. And in order for us to be sustainable and to make sure we're consistent, we we need to work with our codes department ultimately counsel to make sure that the milkweed is not listed as an obnoxious weed that's not permitted. So that in, to your very point. Other things that we learned is the monarch butterfly is really, you know, it it migrates down to South America, so it loves tropical plants. So even though we will encourage using the aster and the cone flower and the daisy and all those that are native to Michigan, we'll supplement it with annuals that are more tropical to help attract and establish that butterfly garden as they're migrating north and south during the winter and summer months.
Yeah, one of the things about milkweeds that make it kind of an obnoxious weed is when it's mature, it's pollinates itself by those puffy, I mean, the cotton balls that flow in the wind and it gets planted in people's yards and stuff.
Right. And I have a native garden at my house and I have a number of milkweeds that I've started propagating years ago just for this very reason.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Mr. Crow, that's so in here. What, and this is a good idea. I definitely appreciate it. What would be the required maintenance of this on a sustainable basis and a continuous basis?
So as part of our request for proposal that we're going to be making a recommendation to the city center tomorrow, our landscape architects will provide a maintenance guide after the the garden has been established, usually takes about two years. And we have a commitment from Eaton Corp that their facilities people will help maintain it and we will help to train them on the proper way to maintain it. So we want, we're hoping that year one, we get it established. Every professional that we talk to is to have deep plantings, massive plantings in the beginning and then may maybe year two going in and and infilling those that didn't take. And then there's a whole routine for annual maintenance after that.
Okay, so Eaton will be picking up the tab for the maintenance?
That, that's the agreement that we have at this time. We might be supplementing some replacement of some plant materials, but it's a partnership. They're granting us the easement. We're installing the initial investment and then they'll be maintaining it in the future.
Okay, thank, I like the idea. I mean, art is art and pretty butterflies are are artful.
All right, counsel?
So we have a recommended resolution, if you wouldn't mind, if you're going to consider. So we have a recommended resolution, if you wouldn't mind, if you're going to consider approving it subject to the resolution that's been provided.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
A move that we accept, item B, the acceptance of Eaton Corporation easement agreement for public art as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Frazier, for the acceptance of the Eaton Corp easement agreement for public art as presented in our packet. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have an item to direct the planning and legal department on a proposed text amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President, for showing to the consensus of the legislative committee meeting. We were looking for a directive from council to work, to instruct planning and legal to work on a text amendment regarding beer, wine, and liquor sales at gas stations.
So you're just looking for a consensus?
There was a consensus at the legislative committee for council to provide a directive to planning and legal to develop the appropriate text amendment to permit beer, wine, and liquor sales at gas stations. And during the meeting, there was a dialogue that planning wanted to review existing elements at gas stations regarding curb cuts, things that are outside, and other items that happen within gas stations. So this would be authorizing planning and legal to prepare a text amendment to make those sales possible.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any, any questions? Mr. Mayor?
I just want to add, this does not mean the council's approving this. It just means the planning commission will bring back, I was at the meeting, so to explain this. It is just that this will give the planning permission to go ahead to prepare the data for council to consider on a text amendment. So it's coming back to you and you'll, you'll vote on it.
Okay. Councilman Banks?
Through the chair, was it also discussed, example, if a gas station is next to a liquor store slash party store? Is something like that going to be allowed, or is that something the planning commission will be reviewing? I know within our city, we do have some, I guess you could say.
That didn't come up at the meeting, Ms. Banks?
Through the chair, those are all items that we'll be discussing.
Okay, those are items also.
Yeah, I mean, I talked about the exterior sales of items. And I think Ms. Councilman Frazier talked about, you know, if you're going to make room for liquor, beer, and wine in the interior, we don't want to see things coming outside to be sold. And we're going to, we're going to be looking at all those, those unintended consequences and issues.
What does that mean, outside to sell?
Well, we, we have the ice chest, the exterior ice chest sales that are not permitted currently. We have some non-conforming situations. We, as I mentioned during the legislative committee, many of our gas stations were originally approved when they were providing automobile repair and service. Those are no longer, most of them no longer do that. But at the time, the sale of tires, wiper fluid, wiper, wipers themselves, any auto-related items were permitted to be sold outside because of these service stations. Now that the service stations are gone, we'd like to clean up the clutter on the outside, not only for street parents' appeal, but to make sure that we have accessible pathways to the front entrance of the doors. That's the clothing donation boxes, the ice chests have encroached on those. And you directed us to study those as well. So we're going to come back with a comprehensive review of existing gas stations in light of the liquor sales, retail, EVs. We're going to try to look at all the unintended consequences, including, I have a note to look at, if there's a liquor store located within a certain proximity. You know, that may negate the ability, may negate the ability of a, of a gas station to sell. So those are all items that we'll be reviewing and vetting through the planning commission and coming back with some recommended texts for your approval.
Thank you. And then through the chair, do we need a corrected letter for the supporting material? Because a letter in the packet is not correct. It just says beer, wine, and there was a letter brought forward that it was also discussed. I wasn't at the legislative committee, that they also discussed liquor. So, and you mentioned liquor, but that's not what the recommendation says. So is it beer, wine, or is it beer, wine, and liquor?
If, if you notice, we actually did not, I've not made a recommendation on this. I mean, the item moved rather quickly through legislative. And we put, put the, but this item is different that it doesn't have a recommendation because we're just committing resources to go ahead and draft an ordinance, make that text amendment, what it might look like. Beer, wine, and liquor, if you want to amend this item, that the action direct beer, wine, and liquor, we're fine with that. That'll be part of the review conducted by both legal and the planning department.
Yeah, I, I think that was always the intent. And, and again, I, it's simply, if we're going to spend time and energy between the two departments, we want to make sure there's, the majority of the council are directing us to do that. And we will include looking at beer, wine, and liquor sales.
And if I may, part of, there, there's no vote on this this evening. It's more of a consensus, and part of it was, if we're going to be asking, as, as it was mentioned, you know, to take city resources, we want to make sure that the entire council is in agreement to looking at these text amendments rather than having them come, do all the research, spend hours compiling something, and then the city council says we're not interested in it.
No, and I agree. It's just, I'm just thinking further down the road, you know, when things are archived and you look back at supporting material, I don't want anyone to ever come and say, wait a minute, this is what you approved, but this is what it says. So I really think that if we could just add the one word and just clean that up, I mean.
I'm in agreement with Nancy, I think it, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Banks. I think it should read what we're actually doing. Just add the word and that would just clear it all up, because that is the way it was discussed.
I was going to say, if that was discussed, I was not at legislative committee. So if that was discussed, I think it should be reflected on that.
And we can make sure that that's added when we go through our approved minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll have that, we'll make sure that that's added.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, mine, converser along the same lines. I'd like to see beer and wine, and beer, wine, and liquor so that we can make a decision whether or not we want to do one or the other. But I agree with Councilwoman Banks that we don't want to come back with one answer and we're thinking something else. So let's do it right the first time, if we can.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, and I know, I know society is moving down the road. And we are, since we are looking at this, I want to get a crime prevention and police report on this. And we include that in, in observation, whatever we're doing, we get, get that in there. I'm off, off record, well, not going off record, but that's what I want to see also. A police report with respect to what this is, would do for crime prevention.
Okay. Is there, do we have a consensus for the planning and legal department to move forward with beer and wine, and beer and wine and liquor?
Support.
I feel, if, if, if I could, through the chair, I would just feel more comfortable if you just directed us through a vote. Then it's not ambiguous as to what the intent is. Just direct us to research this and bring back text amendments.
Okay.
By a formal vote, if you wouldn't mind.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to move that we direct planning and legal on the proposed text amendment of sales of beer, wine, and liquor at gas stations.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to direct the planning and legal department to work on a proposed text amendment as it relates to beer, wine, and liquor sales at gas stations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have the purchase and installation of the Civic Center lift station generator.
Hello, council. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you. The lift station on Civic Center Drive, approximately seven hundred feet from us. We had a problem in November as the alternator went out. We searched for someone who could fix the alternator and we got a price from only one vendor of thirty thousand dollars. We then went back and said, how much is a totally new generator? And that was fifty-four thousand. So we figured rather than bring somebody in to fix an old piece of machinery without backup parts, that we would get and receive quotes for a replacement generator. The quote we received, the lowest one, was fifty-four thousand seventeen dollars and fifty cents from Sourcewell Cooperative, using Total Energy Systems out of Wixom, Michigan. Because this is a necessary item and purchase, we asked the city council to approve a total contract for the amount not to exceed sixty-seven thousand eighty-eight dollars and fifty-five cent, forty-five cents. This will take care of any contingencies that may occur as we install the pump. There are monies available in the water and sewer fund for this, and we also believe that there is the availability of monies we have recently received as a grant. So this will actually have very little impact to the city.
Okay. Councilman Brightwell?
Patrick, where is this lift, lift station located?
It's on Civic Center Drive, like I said, about seven hundred feet, just to the west of Central Park Drive. If you haven't seen it, it's because we did a good job of hiding it.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty well landscaped in and not very noticeable, which is what we want.
That's fine. But I know the lift station came here, what, a couple of weeks ago, a month ago or something that we voted on. This wasn't the same location, was it? Okay, and I think, I think you took, walked us through the elementary function of, of lift station.
Right.
Now, why is, and this is perhaps my own ignorance, a lack of, you know, understanding something. But why is MMRA involved in this?
They actually had grants they were giving away for risk avoidance. And trying to remember the exact term. They were giving away money, certification and accreditation, and risk avoidance. And it, because the dangers that could occur if a generator or a lift station would not work, they allowed us to purchase new generators. And that is what we're using this for.
Okay. If this failed, our residents can sue the city, as we're saying, and then MMRA would cover us?
Normally, you can't sue the city for normal operations because we do have somewhat toward immunity. Can't remember the exact public law. But normally, no.
You can't sue the government.
But we, we don't want to get to that point. We want to make sure that the sewage is handled and there are no backups into people's basements.
Okay, that's why, I'm just trying to figure, why was MMRA into this? And I think I can stand a little bit.
They gave us, it was a grant that we got from them.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Any other questions, counsel? Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, just a general question. I know a year or so ago, there was quite a bit of concern with non-flushables or flushable, non-flushables.
Right.
Is that still a problem?
It's getting worse, actually. And in fact, you'll notice in our CIP, we have some lift stations that we're going to request next year have chopper pumps put in. And the chopper pumps are only put in to deal with the non-flushables. So yes, it is a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Banks?
So why wouldn't we put that, would you just call it a chopper, whatever? Why wouldn't we install that in this one, since it's going to be new?
Well, no, all that's going to be new is the backup generator.
Oh, the backup generator?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
A move that we approve the purchase and installation of Civic Center Lift Station Generator, item D, as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the purchase and installation of the Civic Center Lift Station Generator as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation on My Green Power.
Good evening, counsel. This is an agenda item presented for action, proposed for action at least. Currently fifteen percent of our power is green mandated by MPSC, solar or wind. The My Green Power program from DTE allows us to increase that any customer up to one hundred percent. And when you purchase into the program, this is a legitimate program. We agree to buy power from this portion of the grid. We pay what it costs to produce that power by green, as opposed to nuclear and traditional energy sources. If it's more than the traditional sources, we pay a premium. If it's less than nuclear, natural gas, coal, then we have a discount. For 2021, the most recent year available, the My Green Power was a little bit cheaper. Organizations that already take part in this involve, include U of M, Ford, GM, the Detroit Zoo, Health Alliance Plan. There's a nearby school district that's looking at it. I don't want to say anything because I don't want to steal their thunder. This is a chance for us to be just as green as if we had solar panels on the roof and windmills on the front lawn. The difference is that DTE does it for us. Now, there are some downsides. First of all, this is a popular program. There's a three-year waiting list. It was two-year until Ford signed on. Now it's three-year. But to be fair, if we were to actually generate our own electricity, the lead time would be three years anyway, so that's a wash. Because we're a major customer, we're required to make a five-year commitment. Now, DTE says that, well, if you can find someone to replace you on the waiting list, then you don't have to stay for five years. Kind of a hollow promise, because if it wouldn't make sense for us to stay, then probably there won't be a waiting list. But there is a five-year commitment. The good thing is after five years, we can choose to stay on if we want. So there's really no reason to commit to more than five years. We're just preserving our option with that stance. There's also no guarantee that green will always be cheaper. Now, that's been the trend. All the resources that I've researched, that I've talked to, it's predicted to continue. But there is a, a chance there. Of course, there's a chance to stay with traditional power, too. That could end up more expensive. So there's no guarantee either way. One of the other disadvantages is that although we will be just as green as if we were generating it ourselves, it won't be obvious. If we had windmills and, and solar panels and people would drive by and say, wow, Southfield is really progressive, we will be that progressive. We'll just be paying the people who generate the power professionally to do it for us. We think that's a better way. We've discussed this with our planning department, environmental planner. We've discussed this with our engineers, and this is the recommendation to go this way. Now, it's a three-year wait. The program could change. Obviously, if it does, we'll bring that back. We would not want to agree to something that's disadvantageous. And obviously, we're also proposing that the city attorney review all contracts before they're signed.
Counsel, any questions?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Since there's no questions, I'll make a motion that we approve the My Green Power that was presented here tonight.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by. It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the Southfield, the City of Southfield participation in My Green Power. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the council portion. And Councilman Hoag? Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, nothing.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Uh, nothing this evening.
Councilwoman Banks?
I have nothing to add this evening. Thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Nope. Don't have anything tonight.
Okay. I just had one or two, two things just to point out. One is that, I don't know if everyone saw in the Southfield Sun that the Southfield Library has removed the fines from their library services. There are a couple fine notes to know about. So basically, the way that it works is that if you take a book out of the library, and it will automatically be renewed twice. After it is no longer, after those two renewals, if it is not returned after 10 days, you will be responsible for the entire book. However, it will not be renewed automatically if someone places a hold on the book because they want a copy. I was contacted by a few residents who unfortunately did not get that notice. They thought it was automatically renewed. They never got the email that it was automatically renewed. They just made that assumption, which may be their fault. But then they received a letter from the library asking for the entire book in, to be paid in full with a service charge. So please be mindful. Make sure you sign up for those emails from the library if it does get automatically renewed, and that it does not go to spam as well. Just, but it is nice that they have gotten away from, from some of those fines. And also, I'm sure many of you have seen, if you follow the city's Facebook page, that the Southfield Training Tower, the first of its kind in southeast Michigan, has been completed. There will be an official ribbon cutting later in the year, but it's a wonderful testament to the things that the Southfield Fire Department does. We no longer have to travel to other places for our training. They can all be done behind our headquarters. Like I said, it's the first of its kind in southeast Michigan, and thank you to our council, our administration, for approving that and making sure that that does happen. So if you haven't had a chance, I encourage all the council members to go take a look behind headquarters, this nice, bright red, storage container, training tower that our fire department has. So it definitely looks very nice. So with that, Mr. Mayor?
We have quite a bit yet on the agenda tonight, plus a closed session, so I will forego any further comments, except to say that we did get a communication today about apartment rents. I have responded and copied all of you on the response.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Administrator?
I have no items this evening.
All right. City Clerk?
Nothing. Thank you.
All right. City Attorney?
Yes. Good evening, Council, Mayor. So the items that I have, and I want to make sure I do this in order, the first one is the approval and introduction of the adult use marijuana license. And so, as you know, we, the council had approved the zoning text amendment a few weeks ago, and the way the process will go is that interested entities will have to get a special land use permit, and that goes through planning, and then once they have completed that part of the process, then they'll come to the clerk's office to apply for the license. They also have to do a pre-qualification license with the state of Michigan. And so, one of the things that I've also added, which was next, was a resolution showing that the council was opting in to the adult use marijuana, because we will need to send that to the state. It's called an attestation or something similar. So when those entities that want to come to the city and go through our process, they get the pre-qualification from the state, but the state needs something from the city saying that we've opted in, because we did opt out back in 2019. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about those at all?
Council, any questions on the amendment to the business and licensing trades? Okay. We can take action?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to the Title VII, Business Licenses and Trades, as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the amendment to Title VII, Business Licenses and Trades, as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The item has passed by a vote of five to one, with Councilwoman Banks, we know. Thank you. And next, we have an ordinance number. Is that?
I ask that the council introduce ordinance number 1767, adult use marijuana establishment licensing.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I ask that now, Council. I guess I'm not sure. I thought the clerk usually reads this, to introduce ordinance number 1767, adult use marijuana establishment licensing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I propose we introduce ordinance number 1767, adult use marijuana establishment licensing.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve, to introduce ordinance number 1767, adult use marijuana establishment licensing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries on a vote of five to one. Thank you. Next, we have, as the city attorney mentioned, a resolution to opt in to allow adult use marijuana establishments. Council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If there's no questions?
If there's no questions, all right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to opt in for the adult use marijuana.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the resolution to opt in to allow adult use marijuana establishments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes five to one. Thank you. Next, we have the discussion on charter amendments.
Yes. Good evening again, Council. We had discussed this at our legislative committee meetings, and there had been the discussion of making the clerk position, as well as the city treasurer, an appointed position, as opposed to being an elected position. Just to give you some background, I did reach out to the Michigan Municipal League, and they said that, give me a second here, of the 276 cities with charters, 42 elect the clerk, leaving 234 with various means of appointment, such as appointment by the mayor, appointment by the city manager, city administrator, with approval of council, and of course, appointment by the, she said that again, I'm sorry, but the appointments either by the mayor, council, city manager, city administrator. They said they also track the method of selecting the treasurer, and typically where the clerk is elected, the treasurer is elected, as we have now. A few cities do not. The clerk may be elected, but the treasurer is appointed by the finance director, for instance. So the discussion that we had was that we would have two ballot proposals, one for the clerk, one for the treasurer. They wouldn't be tied bar together, and that the appointment would be by the city administrator, and also the deputies. The way the charter reads now is that the deputies are appointed by the clerk and the treasurer. That also would change, such that they would be appointed, or hired, I would say, just as department heads, like for example, your building department official appointed by the city administrator, and then your deputy building official would then also be appointed, or something along those lines. So that is the discussion that we've been having. I have been in constant communication with the Attorney General's Office, because as you know, pursuant to the home city rule, if we have a three-fifths vote of members of the council that would like to see this go forward, then language has to be submitted to the governor's office, and what happens, as you know, also, is that the governor's office then sends it to the AG to review it. So what the Attorney General's Office does is that they do some unofficial assistance, and so I've been working with them just to make sure that the language is correct. It's my understanding this would go on the November 2023 ballot, but it wouldn't be in effect until 2025. So that means if, once the person is elected in 2025, if the voters were to approve it, then for the 2025 election, we would appoint someone. However, someone appoint, I'm sorry, someone elected in 2023 November, if during that time period between 2023 and 2025, that person says, I'm resigning, I don't want to do this, or something like that, and the voters go to approve this charter amendment, then we need to be ready to go through the process of appointment, which means having a job description and all the things you do when you hire a department head. So what, tonight is going to see if there's a consensus, to see if you want me to continue to present this language. I would bring back a final version after I work with the, meet with the Attorney General's Office a couple more times.
Okay. Councilman Brightwell?
I'm 100% supportive of this, but can you clarify that you say that, I'm just being positive, that if this is approved, the individuals, we cannot make that appointment until 2025?
Correct.
Okay, that will be November, December of 2025?
Correct.
Okay. Now, who appoints the deputy? Will that individual who's appointed treasurer or city clerk, they can appoint their own deputy, or does it go back to the city administrator?
We would have to go back to the city administrator to be consistent with how department heads are appointed now, and then the person under them.
Okay, okay.
Generally, yes.
Okay, so, all right. I just wanted that clarification. I think overall, this is, you know, good management for the city, so, but those are my questions for right now. Thank you.
Councilman Hoag?
I just had a quick question. The two positions, did you say it would be with council approval, or just city administrator?
It would.
No, not the deputies, the actual clerk and treasurer.
It would, it would follow the same way that all the management staff and directors are handled. So it would be a city administrator appointment with confirmation by the council.
That's what I thought. Okay.
And that would be the same way the deputies are currently appointed, or, yeah, hired. Be a better term. Any other questions, Council? So you want, would you like us to vote for you to move forward with the language?
Yes, please. And then I will bring back a final version after receiving the unofficial comments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve Item C in the discussion of the charter amendment as presented, and.
Direct.
And direct the city attorney to proceed as, as outline.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to direct the city attorney to continue working on charter amendments that will be brought back for a vote.
I have a question.
Yes.
Does this have to be a motion, or can we just do it by consensus? Is it that formal to ask her to?
I believe it would.
Do something and bring it back to us?
We just did it earlier in the meeting with the planning commission with the.
Yeah, but I was half asleep.
So I think it also helps formalize what the council wished at that moment, rather than a consensus. That's, that was what I was told earlier by my fellow colleagues that they wished to do, rather than a consensus. Okay.
Okay.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Hoag.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Through the chair, can we, can we do this by one resolution, or do you need two separate, one for the city clerk and one for the city treasurer?
So, excuse me. So what I intend to do is, when I have a final draft of everything, it is going to be two separate. It's going to be two ballot proposals, and I did have a conversation with the AG's office this morning, and they did say that was better to do it that way, so it would be two separate resolutions also.
But for tonight, we only need one to direct her, but when it comes back, we'll have two separate votes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Council? Okay. So to recap, it has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to direct the city attorney's office to continue working on charter amendments to be brought back to the council at a later date. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Council, any other questions until we move to our closed session? All right, we need a.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we move to a closed session.
Support.
All right. It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to move into a closed session for discussion of a written legal opinion on Resolution 205.14 and 2007.204 pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Hoag?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Frazier?
Yes.
Councilmember Manthor?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Thank you. We will now move into our side room for our closed session.